All right, I think it's nine o'clock. Shall we call the meeting to order? Jerry, can you do a rule call? I think we have Rich Marsh out. Bus Grude, you said it's gonna be late. And then Sonny's out today as well. All right. So, outside of that, approval of the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes? Is there any questions, concerns, adder adjustments? Jerry, let me know that there was, I'm fixing your name on there.
Oh.
Typoed.
I'm used to being wrong, smelled wrong.
Anything, any other corrections? I would then entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, meetings were approved. Moving to approval of the agenda. Question, pardon me. Are there any questions or concerns about the agenda this morning? Audience, just so you know, you can pick up an agenda in the back, on the back bookcase, so you can follow along with what's going on today if you don't already have one. We are waiting for Commissioner Busgrude. He'll be here today as well. If there's no, is there any concerns with the approval of the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, let's see, the agenda is approved. The consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with the staff's recommendations by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by Planning Commissioner, staff member, or you, the audience members as well, for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decisions. And just a reminder that CUPs, this is the final action on all CUPs unless they are appealed. And if you want something removed off the consent agenda, audience, we'll be talking about that shortly after we go through with it. Any questions on that? All right.
Hi, Kathy Bolstead. Nice to see all of you again. It's been a while. All right, so item number three is conditional use permit CU 0029 for Lorraine and Doug Smith to review a double-wide manufactured home as a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 0029 with the applicant's concurrence. Item four is conditional use permit 1019 for Tom Bodensteiner to review an additional residence on the subject property as housing for hired help in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1019 with eight conditions. Item five, conditional use permit 1423 for Keystone Adventures. Andrew Bussie has the agent to review a golf driving range in Helipad in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1423 with 16 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1515 for Gerald Meredith to review a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1515 with five conditions. Item seven is conditional use permit review 1531 for Kelly and Lana Jensen to review living in an existing residence while building a new single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1531 with the applicant's concurrence. Item eight is conditional use permit review 1622 for Black Hills Power, Black Hills Electric Cooperative. Michael Pogony is the agent to review a contractor's storage yard for the Tekla Osage Rapid City 230 KV Transmission Line Project in a general agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1622 with eight conditions. Item nine is conditional use permit review 1624 for Black Hills Power, Black Hills Electric Cooperative, to allow a contractor's storage yard for the Tekla Osage Rapid City 230 KV Transmission Line Project. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1624 with nine conditions. Item 10 is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment Review 1302 for Stephen and K French to review the existing planned unit development to allow for nightly, weekly, and yearly rentals. Staff recommends to continue the review of Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 1302 to the August 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 11, Planned Unit Development Review 0607 for Rapid City MHP LLC, Simmiron Mobile Home Park, to review a planned unit development to allow a mobile home park. Staff recommends to continue the review of planned unit development 0607 to the September 11, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 12, Construction Permit 1709 for the City of Rapid City. Banner Associates is the agent to install 12-inch water main to provide water quality and supply looping capabilities to the East Rapid Water Users Region and Rapid City Regional Airport. Staff recommends approval of Construction Permit 1709 with eight conditions. Item 13, Conditional Use Permit 1729 for Art Duran to review, or to allow for a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters on the subject property for seasonal use from May 1st to October 1st in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1729 with 12 conditions. Item 14, Conditional Use Permit 1730 for Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties LLC. Charles Johnson as the agent, to allow for a single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue Conditional Use Permit 1730 to the August 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 15, Conditional Use Permit 1731 for Jack Anderson to allow a double-wide mobile home to be used as a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1731 with eight conditions. Item 16, Conditional Use Permit 1732 for Charles Farren to live in an existing single-family residence while constructing a new single-family residence and to allow the existing single-family residence to remain as storage on the subject property due to historical age in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1732 with nine conditions. Item 17, Minor Platte 1718 and Subdivision Regulations Variant 1707 for Tracy Spawns to create lots 3A and 3B of Mete subdivision and to waive plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of Subdivision Regulations Variant 1707 and approval of Minor Platte 1718 with 10 conditions. Item 18 is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 1706 for Hans Peter and Christine Strike. Fisk Land Surveying is the agent to amend the existing planned unit development to allow the road to be constructed with a 12-foot wide minimum surface area width and 4 inches of gravel, that a maximum of nine bedrooms be utilized in the bed and breakfast establishment with a maximum occupancy of 24 persons at any one time, to remove condition number 13 and that the specific uses of the planned unit development be for a resort development consisting of a nine-bedroom bed and breakfast and residential development, not exceeding one residence per 10 acres. Staff recommends to continue Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 1706 to the August 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, in order for the request to be re-advertised. And item number 19 is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 1705 for Tanner Colburn to amend the existing Sunset Ranch planned unit development to reduce the setback from 25 feet to 12 feet along the west property line on the subject property. Staff recommends to continue Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 1705 to the August 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
All right, thank you very much. Does staff want to pull any?
Yes, staff would like to pull number four and number seven, please.
Four and number seven. Can commissioners want to pull any? Anyone in the audience want to pull any one of the consent agenda items? Come on up.
Steve Bieber. Item number 17, with a setback with Tanner Colburn. I would like a reason why it's being delayed again.
Okay, we can pull and talk about it.
Mr. Chair, I think you mean 19.
I did think you meant 17.
Oh, I'm sorry, I heard 17.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say 17?
No, I'm sorry. I must have misunderstood.
Okay. I think you did say 17.
Well, I'm sorry. You, 17, fine, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure.
No worries, okay. We can pull it and we'll talk about it here shortly.
Okay.
All right. Any others in the audience want to pull anything else from the consent calendar? So if I understand, our consent calendar will be items three, then six through, wow, six. Five and six, and then item number eight, nine, 10, all the way through to 18. Is that correct? Do I have those numbers right? All right, I would entertain a motion for the consent counter, for the exception of item four, seven, and 19.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. And I just wanted to put out there real quick, just in case I forgot to do it earlier, I can't remember if I said it. We have just four members for a quorum today, so any vote that happens today has to be a vote of four to zero, at least at this point in time. It's not just, it's not a majority of the commissioners that are here, it's a majority of the board. So our rules maintain that for something to pass, it's a four to zero. If we voted and it was a three to one, it would not pass because of the requirements of our bylaws, just so everyone's aware. All right, I guess that takes us to item number four.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. The reason I pulled item number four was, in the original agenda request, it was actually recommended for approval, but upon further review of the request, it was noted that the property had actually changed hands or transferred ownership. So that does not meet the conditions of approval, but in speaking with the applicant, he would like the Planning Commission to reconsider that and give us an opportunity to maybe re-advertise it, or what have you. In addition, there was a change in the legal description of it. It is a condominium unit now, where there's different units, and so the conditional use permit originally was under a different legal description, so there's some questions about how to move forward with it, either end it and start a new one, or amend this one, so that's kind of where we're at. But the applicant is here and would like to speak.
Yeah, applicant's here and would like to speak. All right, any questions, real quick, before the applicant comes up? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tom Bodensteiner. I represent Bodensteiner Family Enterprise. To give you a little history of where we're at, is that, and why the confusion exists here, is about 2009, we purchased the property from DTH LLC on a contract for deed. Why it wasn't registered, why Doyle didn't register it until 2015, I don't know, that's not. But when we went through and we did the first conditional use permit for the second house on the property, is that we brought down the contract deed to the Planning Commission because they wanted to see it, you know, to the department. They knew they were doing a conditional use permit with Bodensteiner Family Enterprise and this property. You know, Doyle was just on the sideline on of it, but it sat there. In 2015, is, the land was transferred, but Boden, or Bodensteiner Family Enterprise bought out Doyle Estes. We bought it and moved into it. At that time, I didn't think it was any need to tell the county that we did exactly what we've been saying we were gonna do. We're gonna keep it into Bodensteiner Family Enterprise, and that's where it stayed. The section that they're talking about is unit number one, which this house and this doesn't, isn't included in unit number one. We have the wrong address on this. We have the wrong location on this, where we're sitting on this conditional use. So they're denying us this conditional use permit because we transferred a different property to a, to a different Bodensteiner, my son. It isn't this property that this conditional use permit should be registered to. Now, I know that I'm going to ask that we extend this, so that we can get, at least get the addresses in the right place. And if you're gonna deny it, then don't deny it on something that isn't true. You know, let's get the addresses in the right place, and once the addresses are in the right place, is that we have followed all of the eight conditions that we were asked to follow, from the, from the beginning of time. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, any questions? Okay, no questions, thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak? Anyone from staff, any, any other inputs?
Just an item of note, when the original conditional use permit was approved, it was lot 1R of Beard subdivision. Now the legal descriptions are condominium units. So there's unit one and unit two. This property is actually on unit two, which I didn't know that until after speaking with him Friday afternoon. But still, the legal descriptions and things aren't correct, the way that they were advertised and, and things like that. And I, and it was, in our records, the record of ownership was DHC or whatever, and then now it's under, for what we have is the record of ownership is Carl Bodensteiner, so.
So then I guess the most appropriate would be to continue, so everything can get straightened out? Is that what I'm understanding, from our side of things, or?
I mean, I think it needs to be re-advertized for the correct legal description.
Okay.
At least, and for the correct owners.
It was advertised when it was originally approved, under the current legal description. In between now, then and now, the applicants refiled their legal descriptions or registered deeds.
So they're condominium units now, instead of the lot 1R? So the original conditional use permit was under that legal description of lot 1R, not these condominium units?
That's not as easy as a pending change and a re-notify. It's basically, if we want to redo it, we have to get rid of this one and do a new filing. Is that correct?
If that's the way you wish to amend the, yeah.
I mean, it's up to, as staff, I don't know, because it, the way that we look at it, the conditions of approval, any kind of transfer of ownership, that's the understanding we had. It sounds like it did transfer ownership in one way or another, so we as staff couldn't recommend anything but ending it, because it didn't meet the conditions of approval. If the Planning Commission wants to make a different recommendation to move forward, that would be up to your consideration.
Commission, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion and the vote on this one, because, you know, DTH LLC is actually an entity owned by my husband and I, and we're not involved here anymore, but prior we were, so I think just to keep the slate clean, I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Okay, so noted.
So if we only have three, we can't?
One, two, three. Well, we have four.
Well, I thought you said you had to have four. Oh, we can count?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Well, I know you count.
Right in time, right in the neck of time.
Well, that's what we have on the table. Any further discussion? Either that, or I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Brittany, can I ask you, if we do end this conditional use permit, does the applicant need to kind of start all over again?
Yes.
And will there be a fee associated with that?
Yes.
Okay. Can we waive the fee?
They'd have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners to waive that.
Excuse me?
They would have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners to waive the fee.
We get it, deny it without prejudice, and there wouldn't be an additional fee, would there?
Yes, they would have to pay for advertising costs and also to re-notification of sending the letters out by certified mail.
Just the application fee that would be there?
Yeah. Because they would still have to pay for the sign to be posted.
Any further discussion? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
I don't think that just extending it's gonna get the, everything cleared up, so I'll make a motion to deny it.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. There a second?
I'll second. Mr. Chair, can I clarify? When you say deny, do you mean end? No. Do you mean, because the staff recommendation is to end the CUP, or the CU?
Yeah, that would be the same.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
So, so not deny without prejudice? Just deny?
End, end as staff recommendation.
Okay.
Staff recommendation. So motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It passes four to zero with recusal, so, all right. Believe that takes us into item number seven.
Good morning, Amy Rittering, Planner One. Staff is pulling this from the consent, to allow staff time to verify with the applicant that the SFR does exist and has been converted into the garage per the conditions of approval. When staff conducted the side visit and at the time of staff report, the applicant, when meeting, said that everything was demolished. This is the rubble pile, there was a nice little grassy knoll, so one thing led to another. I assumed that it was demolished and ended through previous staff reports and presentations. It would appear that that single-family residence still exists, and the demolishment and removal was from the interior, so I would like to verify that everything was removed, it has been converted, and we can then end it.
So do I just say you're wanting not to end it? You want to continue?
I want to continue it, please.
Any other questions from the board?
I'll move to continue, CUP 1531, per staff recommendation.
We have a motion.
Check it.
And a second.
Can I get a date with that?
Oh, did you want to continue, do you think the next meeting, do you want to move to September?
No, just the 20th.
The 20th, August 28th meeting?
A motion and a second, to hear on the 28th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Raises to item number 19. All right, Amy.
There it is. So the question was from the...
It was an audience member who was asking why it was continued.
We're continuing this to allow staff and the applicant time to meet. The applicant is working out of state, and there is still a little bit of confusion that needs to be cleared up, and he, we really do need to sit down with the applicant and hash some things out, and that is kind of hindrance when he's not in state and working.
Okay, so, so he was out of state this last week, that's why y'all couldn't meet up with him?
Correct, yeah, he's been out of state since the last meeting on and off.
Okay.
So.
I will say, I did go out to the property and visited with the property owner, and I went and visited with his neighbors, they're actually here in the audience tonight as well, but I did go and visit with them the weekend that I said I was going to, a little bit late. I wanted to go visit others, but I spent quite a bit of time out there. Has ordinance enforcement been out there since our last meeting, just out of curiosity?
Yes, so we, we did conduct an additional site visit. We went out there, Mike, myself, the ordinance enforcement, Jerome from County Fire, and then as well as the New Wonderwood Fire.
And what was the end result of that?
There's quite a large packet that we need to go over.
Okay, so there's a lot of things.
Yes, there's a lot, there's quite a number of things that do need to go over and further digest and discuss, and yes, that's also one of the number of things that we need to go over with.
All right, sounds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, boy.
Amy, do you have a time scheduled with the applicant? When you know he'll be, he'll have returned?
He, quite frankly, we've been playing email and phone tag. In our office time structure, it's of eight to five, I'm not sure, I haven't locked anything down yet.
Because you almost have to meet with him this week in order to, you know, make it to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And he is aware of that, so.
Is he working to try to meet up with y'all this week?
Yes, no, 100%. He is making the efforts, emergencies happen that take him out, so.
Can I ask that I at least get emailed, like, when you do get a time to meet with him? That would be, I would like to, if we can get me emailed on that one, if you don't mind?
Yeah, no, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Any audience members like to speak on this one?
We came here last time.
Go ahead.
Steve Bieber.
Absolutely, thank you.
Came here last time, we got the certified letter, and we came through the discussion, and it was continued, which is fine. And now this last week, we're planning on this to happen again, and just, we don't get the letter for the certified letter, which I'm not sure whether or not he was supposed to send them or not, out again for this meeting to all the neighbors, but nobody got it, so we're kind of assuming that, hmm, must not be gonna go on. Well, come Saturday, we checked the agenda, and it's on there. So now we're in kind of a rush to call neighbors again and see how many neighbors we can get here again, and we got Jim here again, but all the other neighbors already, they can't take time off work in this short period of time that, without realizing it. And it's just kind of getting to be long and drug out, and I don't know why it is, because they're still buildings. It don't matter what you call them, whether it's gonna be an office, whether it's gonna be a hog barn, whether, whatever it's gonna be, they're still too close to the property line. That's plain simple. And we had the petition that we granted you guys here last time we shared, with 26 signatures out of 27 houses we went to. They don't want to see that setback changed. They don't, we want our elbow room out there, we don't, we don't want this, this to be ongoing thing, where if this neighbor here gets it, the next neighbor goes, oh, I'm gonna do it too. And pretty soon, you know, the next time we, it's gonna be, let's, let's make it five feet from the property line, and it's just, we need to kind of just nip it in the bud, as you would say, and have it over with.
Gotcha.
I don't see why we need to continue.
Well, it's so that the staff can address some of the issues specifically with the property owner, so that's, that's one of the biggest reasons, is so they can address the violations. I'm gonna expect, Amy, that y'all are gonna be addressing all of those particular issues once they took the staff out there to visit a piece of property.
Yep.
So sometimes what happens in this, we allow the property owner to fix the problems before anything else goes forward, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to talk to him about what the issues are, get him to fix those issues before we can even move forward with what his request is.
Sure.
So that's what I can tell you right now. You know I've been out there, I talked to you and your wife, you know, a couple weeks ago. I did talk to him that same day. I've been out there, I've seen his property, staff has been out there to see his property, so what I can tell you is, we're working through the process to get everything mitigated that needs to be done appropriately and through the right channels, and then, then, you know, I know it takes time for you guys, because you see it, and then you don't see it, but unfortunately, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work with the property owner to make sure that he does comply, and that's what we're trying to do, which is what you guys want done.
Exactly.
So we're trying to get him to comply before we move forward with anything else.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Fair enough?
It is, yeah, but another question I got is, if you guys do allow this, what's to stop him from just repeating the whole thing again and just, just stuff laying on, I mean, right now, he's tidying it all up to make it all, all pretty and everything, and what's, what's to stop it? Who's gonna guarantee that it's gonna stay that way?
Even if we deny it, who's gonna guarantee it?
That's very true, very true.
See, you can ask a question both ways.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Amy?
I just would like to clarify, it's not, it's not solely Tanner not meeting with us. I didn't get comments back from Jerome until Thursday, late afternoon of last week. It was rally, they were swamped over there with fire.
They were.
So it's one of those, I can't ask Tanner to drop everything, especially with packets going out that same day. It's one of those, we really did need time to meet with Tanner to really get a grip on ever, all the comments that Jerome did make, and that was one of those. We didn't get those till late, to be honest.
Nope, I understand. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would also like to comment that we're not treating this landowner any differently than we're treating other landowners. If you go back through our records, you can see that we will give especially people who have their own businesses multiple chances to continue, because we, as long as the applicants are working with the staff.
All right. Any further questions? All right, if there's none, I'd entertain a motion on item number 19. The current recommendation is to continue it.
I'll move.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Bag, carry, sport. That takes us to item number 20.
All right, Kathy Bolstead again, Assistant Director. All right, item 20 is layout plat 1719. This is a plat to create lot B of Pancrat subdivision. The applicant is Laura Pancrat. The applicant is Laura Pancrats, the agent is Ken Nash. I'm gonna do my best to go over this with you. I wasn't here when this was written, so, but the agent is here, so if you do have any questions. So, what they are doing with this is, this parcel is currently split into three distinct areas. They're not continuous. There's two areas across Highway 16 and then one large area to the south of Highway 16. The one that they are splitting right now is this large area to the south of Highway 16. They have also applied for a conditional use permit, which you'll hear right after this, to improve three existing signs on this property. So, what they are doing is they plan to create these lots to sell proposed lot B, but they want to retain ownership of the signs on the remaining unplatted portion. So, as it exists today, this property is 38.4 acres. It's zoned Highway Service District. It's currently vacant except for three existing billboards. And there's two approaches off of South Highway 16 and there is no special flood hazard area on this property. What they are trying to do is to subdivide this into proposed lot, let's see here. They are doing proposed lot B and then this portion over here will be an unplatted portion. Looks like this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. It looks like there was some concern with access, with access off of Highway 16. It also looks like there was some concern with a couple of the certificates on the plat. It does show that two certificates are not in compliance with our subdivision regulations. There are two certificates that need to be removed prior to the middle of a minor plat. That would be the certificate of the county auditor and the certificate of the planning director. The county fire coordinator also commented on the need for appropriate turnarounds into the subject property from Highway 16. Staff did include this as a condition of approval to require the applicant or the landowner to meet with the county fire coordinator to discuss that comment. And then, planning staff will help the applicant with discussions with DOT relative to what they need there since Highway 16 is DOT jurisdiction. In similar past situations, DOT has required highway improvement after the use on a property increased past a specific documented point, but it'll be up to DOT what they decide they want to do with turnarounds or turnoffs or anything like that off of Highway 16. So, for the purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions. And they will have to apply for a minor plat after this if the layout plat is approved before this is finalized. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1719 with 11 conditions.
Any questions for staff? Anyone from the audience want to speak? All right. No one from the audience? Any questions? All right, well...
I'll make a motion to approve layout plat 17-19 with 11 conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes. Takes us to item number 21.
All right, so item 21 is conditional use permit 1728. This is for this same property. This is to allow for three existing signs to be relocated on the subject property, to allow for the three existing signs to be located within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit, and to allow for the three existing signs to be located closer to each other than the requirement of 1,500 feet from all signs. So, what they are wanting to do is currently, this image up here in the top left-hand corner shows where the three signs are currently located on the subject property. Sign A is a 26 by 8-foot one-sided sign. Sign B is a 30 by 8-foot one-sided sign. And sign C is a 26 by 8-foot V-shaped sign. And then, this image down here in the lower right corner is showing where the proposed location of the three signs will be after they are moved. So, it looks like there's approximately 1,192 feet between the signs. Our zoning ordinance requires 1,500 feet between signs. So, they are just asking for approval to move these existing billboards. And there is a conditional use permit for two signs across the highway. That's conditional use permit 1609. They are in the process of redoing those signs on that property, but again, that's across the, across the highway. These signs are already existing and will be relocated on the subject property. And staff has received two phone calls inquiring about this conditional use permit. Both callers were satisfied that this conditional use permit was to relocate the existing signs rather than putting up additional signs. So, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1728 with 10 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have some thoughts on this and I'd like to make sure I understand. The intent is really to replace those existing signs with, you know, upgraded signs, is that right? And as the way that I understand this, the, with the condition number seven, for example, the areas required do not exceed 250 square feet. So, that's slightly larger than what's out there now. Because right now, the 80 by 30 seems to be the largest, so that's 240 square feet. So, these are slightly larger. How does the V sign work? Does the V sign, each face of it is 8 by 28, so it's really like double what?
That would be a question for Ken. I don't, I haven't been out there recently, so I don't know. Is it, is both sides a V-shaped sign?
It says, it says right now the sign C is 26 by 8, but is that times two because it's each face?
Yes, yes.
And so, the new requirement, it will no longer be V-shaped, it'll just be one face, do not exceed 250 square feet?
Is that one staying as a V-shaped sign?
I don't remember. I don't remember if that was going to stay a V-shaped or not. Certainly can, but I don't remember them specifying.
I mean, it just strikes me as that that, if it does, then it really needs to be, I mean, then that particular sign is, is, you have to times two, because we're talking about sign space.
They weren't trying to change anything except improve the locations, you know, to get them.
Uh-huh. But they really won't take those signs and move them physically, they'll actually construct new signs?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. No larger than what's there now. They're not trying to, they're not trying to enlarge the signs. It'll be that size or smaller.
Right. It seems to me though that we need to, I'd like some clarification on that because, you know, right now, I don't think it's accurate to say that sign C is 26 by 8 feet, because it's 26 by 8 feet times two.
Okay.
So, I think that's important, some important clarification. Also, the setbacks, I wasn't able to really see what the current setbacks are, or I didn't really see it in here, but the, right now, the setback from the property line in front is five feet. Is that about what there is now? Or is that gonna change appreciably the setbacks?
It won't change very much. The reason there's been a change to it is because DOT came in, I believe 84, and redid the right-of-way in that area, which kind of put sign A out of compliance. And it put the others really close to the, to the property line. So, we're just trying to improve them and spread them out and make them a little more appealing.
So, really, the setback, if the five feet, if, it may even be an increase from what's there now? I mean, so you would, so the new signs would be set back slightly more?
Yes.
From the property line than what's there now?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, I just, I want to make sure I understand the letter from George and Nancy of Rafferty that's included in the packet. I want to make sure I understand, so, you know, maybe you could explain what their concern, you know, give me, give me your take on what their concern is and how that's addressed.
Okay, so it sounds like their concern mostly is if they sell that portion of the property that the new owner could potentially come in and put more signage up. Just briefly reading that is what I'm kind of taking. And they would be required, even a new property owner would be required to still adhere to Section 312, the sign part of our zoning ordinance. So, if they wanted to come in and put new signs in there, they would have to go through this process as well, because it wouldn't meet the 1,500 feet between signs. So, they wouldn't be able to just come in and put additional signage up without going through this same conditional use permit process, to where then these same neighbors could voice their concern again and say that it causes clutter. In addition, even if they were to get a conditional use permit, there is still the ability of DOT to deny their sign permit, because they would still have to get approval of a sign permit from DOT since it's adjacent to DOT right-of-way. And the Department of Transportation can still deny their sign permit, to which then we wouldn't be able to issue a sign permit either.
Thank you for that. What's the, what's the, what's the criteria for the DOT sign permits?
You know, I haven't looked at one in a long time, but DOT, a lot of what DOT looks at is site distances, site triangles. They also do look at separation. And I know DOT and maybe you would know a little bit more about what their requirements are, because you go through it.
I think it was 640 feet or something like that. It was, it was a smaller criteria than what you have.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yep. But they still do look at the separation, they look at site distances, site triangles, they look at distances from approaches and all that kind of stuff.
But the way it is right now, that this, on your map, that this parcel all the way from A to C, right now, without some special, another special use permit, there's no, there's no, the spacing, the highway frontage, really is not, there's not enough room for another sign.
Right. Not without an additional conditional use permit.
Yes, right, okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
It looks like they're going to be approximately 1,192 feet between the signs. And our ordinance provides they should be 1,500 feet. And so, your recommendation on number one says that the three existing signs, the three existing signs, I thought they're gonna be gone, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they redoing it?
So, number one, the three existing signs conform to all regulations? Not needed?
It should probably be reworded to say that the three new signs potentially.
Okay, so if the three new signs are going to have to meet all regulations, then they're not going to, if they're 1,192 feet.
Right, except for they'll have this conditional use permit. We could get rid of condition number one?
No, I want to get rid of, we have 1,500 feet, I want to keep 1,500 feet. We don't need any more signs, but, okay, that's all I...
Any other questions?
Yeah, no more questions, but I just want to clarify, it would be my thought that this maybe should be continued so that we get some clarification on this V-shaped sign. Is that gonna be another V-shaped sign? And then, if it is, then number seven, it's, that's not, they're gonna be in violation of that from the get-go, because it says clearly that the maximum display area shall not exceed 250 square feet.
On each face though.
That's right.
But, and he's saying there's gonna be two faces.
Well, but there, if there is, then that's four signs.
Yeah.
But he did, he did say he wasn't sure if it's a V-shaped or not, he didn't remember.
I agree, I would need, I have no problem with that.
I would be in favor of continuing it, so we can get that clarification. So, any further questions or comments?
Can I ask a question? Would the owner be willing to just go with two signs instead of the three?
I don't know. That's either to leave the signs currently where they're at and keep the three.
Okay.
He's trying to stay with three, I know she is, but I don't know if she would go for two or not, but I can certainly ask.
It appears that, actually, the description of what they want to do is inaccurate. They don't want to, they don't want to relocate signs, they want to replace the signs. And so, and I, I'm in agreement with the 1,500 feet is a better number to use than 1,200.
And I'm also agreeing with Kathy's description that, you know, we should get it clarified if the one sign is gonna be two-sided, V-shaped, two-sided or not. So, I guess I can try to make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue conditional use permit 1728 to the August 28th meeting. That should give you time to sort out those details.
All right, there's a motion.
Check it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That carries us to item 22.
Okay. Presentation going here. All right, item 22 is layout plat 1717. This is to create lots A and B of Rutherford subdivision. The applicant is Mark Rutherford, Castle Creek Enterprises. All right, as this property exists today, lot 17 less outlot 1, which is this large portion that you see right here, is currently 13.3 acres. It's zone general commercial district and access is from Highway 385. There is special flood hazard area on this property. The applicant does have a floodplain development permit on this portion of the property. It looks like one from 2016 and one from 2017. This property is surrounded on three sides by U.S. Forest Service property. It is the location of Horse Creek Resort and Horse Creek Inn, which offers rental cabins, RV sites, vacation homes, park models, park model sales, a restaurant. There are several building permits on this property, along with several onsite wastewater treatment systems. And then, outlot 1 of 17, which is this smaller portion towards the back here, that is currently vacant of any structures. There is special flood hazard on that property as well. They have also applied for a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment in conjunction with this plat that you will hear next. So, what they are trying to do here is proposed lot A would be approximately 17.3 acres. This would be general commercial zoning. It would include all of the structures that are currently on lot 17, except for the inn slash restaurant and a few other smaller structures. You can see them over here. This is the restaurant, and then there's a couple of outbuildings that would be included on proposed lot A. And then, proposed lot B, excuse me, oh, yeah, no, over here is proposed lot A, sorry. This is proposed lot B. Proposed lot B would be two acres, it would be general commercial zoning. And this would have the inn and the restaurant plus those couple outbuildings. So, all of the cabins, park models, all of those kinds of things that currently exist on the property would stay on proposed lot A. There, with that plat, you can see this hashed area is the special flood hazard area that goes through here. Let's see here. So, the proposed subdivision and lot line reconfiguration would be in harmony with the existing land use and it does not increase lot density here, but it would allow for expansion of the existing land use. And for the purposes of a layout plat, staff does not find any issues with this request. He would have to go through the minor plating process to finalize this before he could file this plat with the Register of Deeds. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1717 with 13 conditions.
Any questions for staff? Anyone from the audience want to speak on behalf of this? All right, any questions or comments? Not, I would be open to a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it with 13 conditions.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 23.
All right, and then, item 23 is the... All right, and then item twenty-three is the rezon and comprehensive plan amendment that goes along with this plat. It is to rezon four point seven seven acres from suburban residential district to general commercial district and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from suburban residential district to general commercial district. Excuse me. So what he is trying to rezon here, um, you can see it a little bit. This little orange piece right here is currently outlot one of lot seventeen. Um, it's currently Zoned Suburban Residential District. So with this request, what he is trying to do is rezon that to general commercial so that the entire property is general commercial, is essentially, um, what he's trying to do. Um, the current and future land use within one mile of the subject property, there's general agriculture district, there's public lands, there's planned unit development districts, there's general commercial district, and there's suburban residential district. So this request, um, would bring harmony with the surrounding zoning and harmony into the plat that was just approved. So staff is recommending approval of rezon seventeen seventeen and comprehensive plan amendment, um, seventeen, um, no wait, rezon seventeen oh seven and comprehensive plan amendment seventeen oh seven.
All right, any questions for staff? Anyone from the audience want to speak on this? Seeing none. If there's no comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the rezon seventeen dash seventeen and the com- comprehensive plan amendment seventeen dash seventeen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Normally want a separate motion for those, or is that what you?
Oh, it's seventeen oh seven, not seventeen.
Because it says seventeen seventeen.
Yeah, in the recommendation, but I think it's actually seventeen oh seven.
Uh-oh. Was there a typo?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Seventeen oh seven.
Do you want me to redo my motion?
Let's officially do it, if that works, or Jerry, or do any of us have any problems with?
I'm, I'm okay.
You're okay with it? Are we all all in with the edit?
Seven.
Okay. All right. So then that takes us to twenty-four, which is county board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting.
Awesome. Any questions, comments? Nope, all right, twenty-five. Item from the public. Anybody from the public want to speak on anything? All right, seeing none. Uh, items from the staff?
Um, it looks like I'm supposed to talk about the building permit report, which. Right, so for building permit report for July, um, it looks like we are up a little bit on single-family homes. Um, it looks like overall, um, year-to-date, we're up on number of permits, um, down a little bit on dollar amounts in permits. Um, but it looks like single-family residences are going up. Um, and also it looks like garages and carports and then residential additions, um, have, have gone up over this time last year.
All right. Any questions or comments? Oh, okay, all right, so any items from membership? Oh, we're pretty cruising along here. All right, well, in that case, if there's no items from the membership, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, all signify, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.